Good morning, everyone. The Division of Petri is aware of important business. On the record, with Black Fan, item number one is approved until the end of July 12th or June 5th. The motion, and you got a motion by motion 11 hours second. We change this to the minutes, Commissioner. Well, okay, then the vote is unanimous. Send them these off those minutes. And two sheriff's office notice of wellness grant. You guys gonna try to get well, I what's going on?
We're gonna try. It'd be a long road. So the sheriff started working with two professors from UNH in their social work program. And it's a Department of Justice grant out of the cops office. And it focuses on mental health, physical health, well being. And the good news is there's no cost to the county and there's no need for matching funds like most grants typically you have to earlark money. And the funds can be used for things such as voluntary therapy, financial planning, portfolio assistance. And there's this other opt like, you know, kind of like what our health benefits here, but it also gives you stipends for working out. It'll help pay for memberships, things of that nature.
There you go, show over work out, there you go.
It'll be, I, my understanding, it'll be a few months before we even know if we get approved for the grant. But the, the hope of the sheriff was that you, you would be willing to accept those funds. So that was, that's that item.
And they're depending on the size of the grant, you know, we might need to go back to the executives committee or someone so we'll.
Well, they're looking to apply for $200,000 at the two year grant. And it would begin October 1st.
So probably not, but we'll, we'll figure that out when it gets closer.
And, and those benefits do extend to every employee of the sheriff's office. So not just born deputies, you know, the dispatchers, the civilian corps of employees we have. Kelly could use some therapy.
What, what will the rest of the department do?
She's like, I just see these lateral transfers.
All right, well, I don't have any objection to it. I don't think permission 11 does either. So we'll just, just pull the paperwork to us when, when you're ready.
They'll be MOU. It's due Monday.
Oh, that fast?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, those two professors have been working feverishly on it. We got, we got them all the numbers and data they needed for, for our agency. And they're, they're actually, they've taken the, the lead on that.
Just let me know when the paperwork's here and I'll come in and sign it. All right, item three is that we gotta talk about the purchase equipment to go off the sheriff's van.
Can I just start for a second? Yes, Chairman. I know that we approved that, but the, the equipment or I know you gentlemen approved that, uh, the purchase of the vehicles. But the equipment, uh, the outfitting of the vehicles tended to be more than I envisioned. And I didn't feel I had the authority just to go over. You know, I, I felt it needed to come back to the commissioners.
Right.
Uh, and it, and it won't delay really the, the acquisition of the vehicles because they're four to six months out. So it's not gonna, you know, I, so I, I was comfortable at, at talking to the sheriff, the sheriff's office and through Diane about, you know, delaying it until your next meeting because, and then since then, we've learned some additional information regarding maybe the number of vehicles that we need. So, um, that just kind of outlines where we're at and I'll leave it up now to.
Correct, so, um, the, the, the cost of the build out of those vans is extremely high. And if you look at the itemization, it's a $37,000 build out for one passenger or transport van. $26,000, excuse me, $400 of that is just for the metal box that goes inside the van, the prisoner transport security box.
Um, it's. We can't, we can't transfer the old ones that I.
So the problem is the vans that we've, we've deadline two vans already, but they're not, they're old Chevy vans. And they don't have any equipment in them that would be compatible with these Fords. So, but we, Chairman McGlaughlin met with the sheriff last week and we discussed some changes in what if ICE and the implementation of this new private transport company and whether we need two vans. And, uh, the sheriff, sheriff, we talked about it and she agreed, we could probably get away with just one. So, yeah, that right there is a $94,000 chop right off the top for, for one van. Unfortunately, there's no way around that, that the components for this new van. But just to give you guys some perspective, we deadlined two vans this year. And we are soon to deadline our 2017 Ford Transit van, which was the first transit van we ever got. Cause Chevy went away from their Recano Express vans. That one never had a prisoner box in it. It just had rows of seats and secured windows, um, which wasn't optimal, but we were in a pinch and we needed something. That van currently has, as of a month ago, has 234,000 miles on it. I foresee that one going bye bye in the next inspection cycle. And then we have a 2014 Chevy cargo van. The last Chevy on the lot out there, you know, like a rock, but that's, that one has 181,000 miles on it. We won't even, we're not even driving that one. It's rough. We'll, we'll run local courts, you know, from, from the jail across the street. But I see that one eventually fleet services is gonna go, no. They're starting to rot out and they're starting to have issues. So we definitely could use one van.
Right.
In, in anticipation of these vans going into the quiet night.
You know, given 11, 12 years out of a.
Yeah.
And it's.
It's a good run.
It's a good run. Yeah, because this, this stuff today, this, this, it doesn't last like the trucks we're buying for our businesses. I mean, they've wrought out in five, six, seven years. And they get, you know, mad money for this stuff. It's just, it's just crazy, but I'm all for just getting one van now. I think there's gonna be, I think also just for the record, there's gonna be a lot of changes made to how this transport business evolves as a result of the Trump administration. They get a lot of, I'm also hearing now that the Bureau of Prisons are gonna, are getting a contract potential on their transports. Okay, so there's gonna be, you know, I think that's buying one's the smart move. Save some money.
Hundred percent.
See what happens next year with this whole dynamic now. We've also talked, I've also talked to you Diane about the, the financing problem because we need the numbers.
I have the VIN number for the van.
Well, we also, I mean, they're four to six months out.
Yeah.
I mean, we normally will.
Will they, will they build the van for us?
I have a plan with that.
They, they, Mr. Chairman, they actually will. I, I reached out to the salesman and I asked him, when do you need to be funded? And I can forward you the email. I just got this, um, roughly, start building these roughly October, November. Payment for the equipment and vehicles. We send out the invoice once the car has been picked up or delivered. So we have some time and he said, oh, and by the way, here's your VIN number. He's like, I lied, I thought it'd be 90 days. So I know you had the vans for the explorers. I do have the VIN for that van, which I'll, I'll just forward you. I figured we'd talk about it today.
We did have an alternate plan, uh, Mr. Chairman, that there was, we do have funds in this year's. Because of the delayed time in producing the vans, there won't be a payment made until next, excuse me, next year.
Next year.
Which I budgeted for some payment for these vehicles, which were approved as part of the budget in this year's budget. So we actually, if we did need to make a down payment, so to speak, we would have somebody in this year's budget. Diane was kind enough to calculate it out for me. However, if, if we don't need it, we might as well save it.
That's the ideal situation.
Yeah, that's right. The ideal situation is they'll just take our word for it that we want to buy these vehicles.
Right, we kind of need to figure this out. He's like, when you, when you pick them up.
That's great. That's, that's.
I'll put you that email so you have that and you have the VIN number for the van as well.
And then we'll, we'll, you know, we can get them financed quite promptly, uh, you know, once, once they're ready to.
Love the plans next year, I'm fine with that.
Four to six months brings us pretty close to the end of the year, possibly, you know, you're not gonna.
According to him, they'll start building these in October, November. That could be a month to build them. So I think, again, who knows if they get ahead of themselves, but that's what, that's what they're telling us, what they're forecasting.
Well, we're good with that, you agree with that, Charlie? Yeah, all right, we're, we're good. Let's go forward one van.
And then we have the three explorers and I, and I can give you, uh, we deadline two cruises this year. Just for some, some reference for you guys, um, some of the, some of the cruises we're running right now. Um, 2017 has 140,000 miles on it. That's probably gonna start to crap parts as we say. Uh, we have a, a 2020 with 94,000 and a 2020 with 114,000 miles on it. And these numbers are a month old. So I, I foresee we're gonna be plus a couple and then those are gonna go away.
So the cruisers, do those have to be built as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I believe the cruisers, they actually had on the lot.
Oh.
Cause that's why you got VIN numbers right away, but they still have to outfit them with all the things that make them a police cruiser.
Get those, those three interceptors. I mean, because.
They don't have to all come at the same time.
No.
We could do two separate loan, I mean, we had to do that during COVID when it was really difficult to get, you know, vehicles. So it doesn't necessarily have to be.
Two cruisers, which isn't quite.
It's not, uh, they, you know, we, we frequently, uh, because of the way they're built, uh, we, we usually get reasonably good bids on those. And I have another vehicle that, that's set there waiting so we could group bid them.
And I, we actually have a, remember the Tahoe that the marshals gave us? I have to, so I'm waiting on these gentlemen to get all this remainder of the equipment out of it. And I'll get you the title and get that across the street.
That's the one I'm waiting on.
Yeah.
You know, we could, we could group bid, they go better. We seem to be able to attract like taxi.
245 miles, it still runs.
Yeah, you know, so we, we, we have some ideas that, that I'll lay out for you once we know the timing of all this.
Looking for a beer. All right, so I guess we'll move into that, we'll just, just move forward with it, right? Awesome, thank you.
Is, is there any other information regarding yourself that's public information?
Uh, oh, my promotion?
Yeah.
Yes, uh, that's the sheriff, uh, effective July 14th. She's gonna make it official and we'll be the, I've been the acting chief deputies since Sheriff McGivern retired. And there'll be, uh, she's planning on swearing me in on July 22nd.
Congratulations.
So I just wanted to say congratulations.
Yes, sir, I appreciate it.
I know we talked privately, but.
Yes, sir.
I just thought I'd like to publicly say congratulations.
Appreciate that.
You've earned it.
Thank you.
Every step of the way.
Yeah, I thank you very much. Appreciate the kind words.
So yes, we're all set, right?
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
You too.
We do, we'll see you later.
Thanks, Chief.
Almost.
No, that's.
It's, it's weird to hear that. If you'd have told me when I started, someone would call me chief, I'd have laughed at you.
Okay, he's done a great job.
He has.
He's such a nice guy to deal with.
Yeah, he's just a pleasure to deal with.
Okay.
FX was supposed to bill a firm last night.
The, uh, the assignment?
Yes. Um, I'm assuming that Kathy got sidelined.
Okay, that's fine.
Maybe.
No, no, we'll just discuss it. We'll, we'll talk about it. We don't, we can authorize it, we can sign it afterwards.
Okay.
So, uh, item five is the assignment of the lease from Southeastern Hampshire Services to Community Partners. This has been a, a negotiation that's been going on for about two years. With between Community Partners, who's our mental health provider here in this county and Southeastern Drug and Alcohol, which is located in the old Arms House. Uh, Mr. Bauer and I both have been interviewed by the Attorney General's Office regarding, uh, this transfer. Uh, there's been multiple hearings by the Attorney General's Office regarding some, uh, Community Partners ability to take over Southeastern Hampshire Services. Uh, apparently they're satisfied, uh, so they're gonna be moving ahead. Now, as part of that, we have a lease agreement with, um, Southeastern that needs to be, uh, would be transferred to Community Partners. There'll be no changes in monies, there's no changes in the dynamics of our relationship. It just, you know, they're just, they're taking it over basically for that, which is, uh, you know, Southeastern has had a, it's had its ups and downs simply because the, the state and the feds just don't reimburse enough to run. And they keep changing rules and they keep changing rules, right? They, they, I, I kind of felt bad for them because every time you turn around, there was something else that they had to deal with. They, 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 they put requirements on them, but not fund them for the requirements. Uh, and it just, it just, it, then they've had these ups and downs for a long time. Not to give you any history lesson on this, but, um, when Ray first came here, um. Yeah. Uh, I had a long discussion with Commissioner Doom on, rather heated one. Or if you want to tear the building down, I didn't want to tear the building down. Uh, only, not only for historical purposes, but I thought we could reuse it for something. And Southeastern came, we made the bill available to them, uh, back. Well, I know, uh, it hasn't been almost 40, it's gotta be 40 years. When we do those types of services out. And, uh, we've, we've, uh, over the course of time, spent significant money to bring the facility up to Medicare, Medicaid standard, not Medicare standard. So in any event, Community Partners taking this over could probably be a good thing, uh, long term. Uh, because the services that they provide to the mentally ill and, and they have dual diagnosis clients, mental illness and chemical abuse. Them being housed here at the county will, will hopefully enhance our relationship across those both specter, both mental health and drug and alcohol. So, um, having here is a, is a good thing. Uh, you imagine it's probably gonna be a long-term great thing.
You know, as, you know, as Louis says, sometimes it's, talk about an old analogy, which comes first, the chicken or the egg? And, and, and you know, the, the fact that these two agencies run together, there's not the tendency to say, oh, no, it's, it's mental health. Oh, no, it's drug abuse. It doesn't matter because the two agencies are together so they can manage this population. But hopefully, without, hopefully without transferring it to each other.
I don't think people have a, I think brave point, uh, needs to be emphasized because people don't realize how our, how disjointed our delivery system is here. We, we proved, we proved that when we ran the IDN, Integrated Delivery Network back a few years ago. There was a lot of things that came out of that work that proved that disjoint, how disjointed services are. How they don't talk to one another and how they have a tendency to, as Ray says, well, this is a mental health problem. So you gotta go over here, or this is, uh, you know, an alcohol problem, you gotta go over here. When the person, you know, you talk about one person that has these symptoms, you know? It's funny, we just treat some of these problems, these health issues so differently than you would if you were in a hospital setting. Because they try to treat everything like you, you might have six doctors kept in the room, but they're not, they're not forcing you to go to six different hospitals for six different types of care. I mean, you know, it just doesn't make a lot of sense. And hopefully, maybe they'll save some money.
There was a headline this morning, Farnham, um, I don't know if there's located in Concord or Manchester, but they're closing their in-person services.
Yeah. We Farnham, yes, yeah, cause we send.
And we.
We, we send a lot of inmates.
Right.
Yeah.
I, uh, this morning, every morning when I come in, I do it, I do a drive around the building, which I have done since we had somebody trying to get through.
Somebody hanging out the window.
And, uh, as I drove by, I spoke to a staff member over at Southeastern and they were talking about the impacts that's gonna have. The closing of Farnham, uh, Farnham Center, it's 140 bed, um, uh, that, that's not true, I'm sorry. Uh, but it's the impact because they sometimes send people for continuing care from Southeastern. And we send a lot of people, uh, to, to kind of continue their recovery efforts to that place. And we're, now that's just yet another place that we don't have, uh, the ability to send.
Well, you know, we think the governor ought to, ought to, you know, relooking at this to try to figure out what we, what we ought to do. We can't, you can't. You know, there's a direct relationship between the folks that we see on the street and the services we provide to the mentally ill. There's a direct connection to that. And until the state recognizes that in some fashion, to, to lose those beds, make them, have those beds not available. You just, it just, it's just gonna exacerbate the problem that you see on the streets.
When we were doing, when we were in that, um, IDN project, I mean, a place like Farnham, and there were other places too that we funded. And I mean, their issues were they couldn't retain employees.
No.
Um, recruiting was even more difficult. And then it was, it was the funding they were, and yeah, it was not good news this morning to see that.
Oh, no, the, the, the other thing too is that historically, the state took on the responsibility of handling the mentally ill in New Hampshire as a result of the fire that we had here that killed forty some odd people when the counties ran a silence. Uh, and it took the counties out of the business and it was the state's responsibility to handle the mentally ill. And we've just, we had these fits and starts over the course of time since I've been in the office here. Sometimes we're doing okay and then sometimes we pull the money back and we don't do okay. And I don't see that, not saying they haven't done a good job. But what I am saying is that with more resources, we're seeing more mental illness and, and we see it in our own facility. And they just need to, they're gonna get their priorities strict. And sometimes they don't do that as well as they should.
The way of a settlement on the group two retirement system. To hold up the whole budget.
Yeah, now, now what are they gonna do? What, what are they doing with that?
I, I don't know, cause they haven't announced the details of the settlement. Apparently it was, uh, late last night type, you know, back room. Between the Senate and the, and the governor. So that supposedly was the holdup in the budget, that and the funding of the Manchester School District. Uh, but the headlines and the union leader this morning was that there is a settlement on the budget, which, yeah, I, I know I'm, I'm sounding facetious that those are the things they fight about when, when we don't have enough money to care for our elderly. We don't have money to care for the mentally ill, but we fight about those things. But what, what is, um, interesting is that it, it would hurt us cash flow wise if we didn't have a settlement. Because it would, we'd be frozen at some level, which hadn't yet been determined based on last year's budget. Or this current budget, which ends June 30th, would be frozen at some level, which would affect our reimbursement rate at Riverside primarily. Um, so at least I, I'm, I mean, I'm happy for a settlement, even though I'm speaking facetiously about the, the reasons why it might not have settled. Um, so that's a good thing, hopefully, uh, you know, we all, I think there's some technical procedural votes that need to take place. But I have every reason to think that those will be, those will pass and hopefully will be all set.
Well, uh, needless to say, I think it's a good move to have Community Partners here. So there shouldn't be any holdup on our end. Charles, it relates to them at least, there's no changes, it's just transferring the present relationship to, to Community Partners. So, uh.
So what I'd like to do, Mr. Chairman, is I have the, I have the lease. Uh, what I'd like to do is just send it quickly to, no, um.
Private.
No, the gentleman from, uh, Community Partners.
Oh, Chris Coles.
Chris Coles.
Yeah.
Who, who's actually, uh, uh, emailed me. So I'd like to just send it to him real quick. And then, you know, where you guys approved it, I need to drive it down or you can come in and sign it.
Yeah, okay. All right. So permission 11, 11 made a motion, made a motion to authorize that. You agree with that, Charlie? Now, second in the voting unanimous. All righty, we got a list of upcoming events. We got a little new business, annual business.
Yes, Diane and I have a piece of old business. The, uh, we had another, uh, conference call with, um, our solar.
Oh, yeah.
With research provider.
What is going on with this?
Well, it's like, it's like we've never had the call in May. I mean, it's like we're starting all over again. Uh, but we have provided them, um, uh, uh, the information all over again. Um, in, in some cases, it's not awful because it's a little more updated than, than the information that we provided them in May. So Diane sent that all to them yesterday. So.
What, what's the?
Well, the information we provided.
Yeah, but what's their plan? I know what they.
Their, their plan stands like, like it always has, like we've always asked them to do. They're gonna look at every possible option for us. Now, the next meeting, or I believe it'll be the next meeting, it might be the meeting after that we have with them. We're gonna do it in public with all, with you three commissioners and hear the results of what they're looking for.
Okay.
So there's three pieces, a third piece that kind of got added. We've been contacted, uh, a couple of times by an entity that is, has contracted with various municipalities um, that has more power than, um, what that municipality can use. Meaning they wanna, they wanna sell it.
They want to sell it, yeah.
So that's a new piece that's gonna be assessed by this.
You're talking about Kirsarch.
We're talking about Kirsarch. Kirsarch has been emailing me.
Yeah.
I've been delaying responding to them.
I've gotten three, I've gotten three inquiries myself from different solar companies that want to do something and I'm willing to wait. We get, we get this consultant, I've been pushing them all up.
Well, that's what I did with Kirsarch, but now we forwarded Kirsarch's information to the, to the, to this company.
Technical system.
Sure, yeah. And, and the second thing would be what, what would our advantage be to, for us to fund it?
Right.
And the third advantage would be.
Whether we will.
Whether we privatize.
Privatize it, yeah.
And those are all things that, that they're going to be checking on. We provided them information, as you know, Rockingham's new.
Yeah, the town.
A stunning building. I happen to, you know, when I, when I was there last summer, I've seen it.
Uh, that building's unbelievable.
It's unbelievable. Um, yeah. That, they got, um, you know, they got some technical assistance and then they're just a little further ahead because they have a new building. And, um, they're attaching the solar to the building, they're building carports and they're attaching the solar to the roofs of the carports. So we've given them Chuck Nickerson's name because Chuck has been the one that's been spearheading that at Rockingham.
Yeah.
And you know, he, I think he feels he owes us. So I mean, he's gonna go way out of his way to work with his company on.
We did give them the information back in May.
But we, we just gave it to him again. We, we also gave them, um, Jim Monahan's information because, you know, there has been some, I think fairly subtle changes in this legislative session regarding the amount of power that, you know, can be.
Produced.
Yeah, produced by a political entity. So, uh, we've given them all the information that they need. Uh, we also gave them, if you remember when you gentlemen awarded the bids for the gas and, and electricity. We got the bid documents, uh, and sent that to them also. So they'll have the updated information about load.
Yeah.
From the, the documents we had from you source.
From you source. So we've sent them, we had the meeting in, uh, noon time and Diane had already sent, you know, we had acquired the stuff and Diane was kind enough to forward it off to them in the afternoon. So they've got it all, most of it for the second time.
Well, I hope, I hope that, you know, that the, I'm hoping that the next, let's just put it this way. After, when you guys have your next call, we're not seeing any progress on this. You know, we're wasting time.
Maybe what we could do a little differently, we've sent this out rather than wait for them. Maybe in two weeks I can reach out to them.
Yeah, and say, what's?
As a follow-up, have you?
Yeah.
You know, what have you done to?
Send, send an email to that new lady. Uh, three of the four people on the call were all, who are all brand new.
Yeah.
The, the only one person that was, um, there was only one person who seems to be the technical engineer. He's the only one that, and I don't even think he remembered our call, although he had documents. You know, he was the one that was able to find the documents that we previously sent to them.
The sad part about this is that we've had multiple people contact us, we're willing to do this work. And the feds made the grant available to us, but the feds were, the feds required, as far as I got, the ticket to pick the consultant. Well, okay, great, but we're wasting time here.
Well, things were put on, on pause.
Yeah, I know. The feds putting on pause for a while.
I get.
And some people left as a result because they probably.
They probably figured they were gonna be out of the job.
Yeah. Get money back. There's no money back, the feds fund, the, the feds fund.
So they'll pay the entity.
They'll pay the entity directly. They picked the entity, they're paying them direct. It just frustrates me because as time goes on, as time, as all this time goes on, we could be taking advantage of the, this and, and saving the taxpayers some money.
Well, there've been. Since we've started, there've been two rounds of EECBG money that we haven't applied for because we don't have enough information.
We need information from this end of the.
They fly through the.
So that's, um, you know, the, from the Department of Energy, there, there's funding and they're supposed to be helping us with that. So that's, um, you know, the, from the Department of Energy, there, there's funding and they're supposed to be helping us with that piece. And actually, when I do send a reminder to them, I'll.
Yeah.
Remind them about that piece, cause that could be, you know, that's funding. And there's been two rounds that have come, you know, since we started with this, um, technical assistance. And, uh, we can't apply because we just don't have enough information, um.
Well, at least I guess we're on the right road, even though.
Well, we're on, we're on the right road. It just took a left. Now it's taking a right, going, heading back on the straight road. But, but it's a little disappointing, but unfortunately, because we couldn't pick our vendor. We couldn't go out for a bid.
I know.
And.
So much further.
If, if, we could have obviously been in a more of a driver's seat if we could have picked our own vendor.
Right.
You know, we could have been on their backs.
I get it.
Uh, but it's a little hard when they don't work directly for us.
Okay. I noticed, well, also there was an effort, uh, going on in Barrington and Lee and Madbury about regionalizing a fire department. Um, I, I, I got a big chuckle out of it.
You and me both.
Yeah, and, uh, I, I wish I luck. I, I really have totally been convinced for many, 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 many years that if people really wanna save money, they really wanna save on their property taxes. They need to look at the way services are delivered and we need to change the way we're doing business. It isn't any more complicated than that.
And, I mean, they, you know, we've always said that the best time to make adjustments is, is one position, you know, in positions is when positions are vacant. They seem to be in a, from what I've read, all three fire chiefs are a- a- about to retire.
Right.
So we're not, they're, they are not stepping on anybody's toes, um, and protecting. So this, this would seem to be the ideal time, uh, uh, a, an idea that we brought forward ten years ago.
Ten years ago, fifteen years ago.
Yeah.
Before they started building the large public safety buildings in each town.
In each town.
Yeah.
Yeah, we tried to convince them that.
There, there'd be certain things that, but they weren't, everybody's at their different level of readiness and, and nobody. I mean, even, we even had chiefs of police say, you know what? You're right. It would save a lot of money, but I'm not giving up my kingdom.
Yeah, I'm not giving up my power.
Yeah. They actually said that in public.
Yeah, but this is, this would be police and EMTs. I mean, fire and EMTs, not.
I, I understand, but, but the concept's the same.
Yeah, the, the, the psychological aspect's all the same.
But, but it'll probably come time, they'll have a hard time.
I can remember when Roland Rovers was sitting here with me, we, we were both, he was mayor of Rochester, I was mayor of Dover, and we were both building wastewater treatment plants. And I said, we should build one plant. We'll build it in Dover. You guys pump your service to Dover. It was gonna save hundreds of millions of dollars.
Over ten.
Over, hundreds of millions of dollars, but, but everybody. And the Rochester City Council.
No support.
Absolutely not. I go, are you people out of your minds?
Yeah, we are. Whoops.
Yeah, you're out of your minds. And, and, and were you gonna save taxpayers?
Well, the, the interesting part too, if you remember correctly, when, if, if my memory's correct, when Dover first opened there.
Yeah, it wasn't big enough.
It wasn't big enough?
Our, our flow wasn't big enough. They were, they were actually making us pollute water. To make, to make, to make the plant, the plant had to function at a certain level and we just didn't, we, we built it big enough for expansion.
Everybody was complaining about the smell.
Right.
And the reason that, that the smell was occurring is there wasn't enough.
Surge.
There wasn't enough surge going through to properly treat it.
Properly treated, so we had the pollute water into the, into the system. We did it for years and years. And all we had to do was run the line down from the lagoon system in Rochester down the old railroad to the county, cause back then the county wasn't hooked up.
Yeah.
We wanted to hook up the cap, run it down. It was safe. I, I can't even talk about it. It makes me sick because it's so stupid. It's beyond stupid and, and, no.
Then just don't look at all the money Rochester has spent on that land.
Yeah.
And all of those.
I know, you're not gonna tell me, I, I, I'm like.
But, but, but it is in pure, yes, it did bring a little bit of chuckle, but it was encouraging to see that the, those towns are, are.
Yeah.
Looking at that.
Working and look, looking at it again, the fiftieth time.
No.
That's actually, it's not even the fiftieth time.
But this is a good, you know, this is, this is a good thing that could, you know, set a precedent for.
Right.
For future stuff.
But, you know, I, I get a big chuckle every time.
I remember going through that.
And I go, are you kidding me? I mean, okay, great. Let's talk about it again. You know, but they, but people always complain about their taxes, but at the end of the day, certain services have to be delivered. And we went through that entire exercise fifteen years ago to see which level of government was best suited to provide those services. And we went through all of that and then there was just zero, very little support for any of them. Uh, uh, which, which made no sense.
Biggest thing would have been assessing.
Assessing.
Assessing would have.
And, and building inspection, because we, we, we had, I mean, those are the simple.
Well, and there's such inconsistencies.
It's cool.
I'm sure Commissioner Levick can tell you that there's inconsistencies in inspections from, from different entities. You know, different towns you're in, look at things in different ways.
And, yeah, I can tell you this, this is just a season of inspections.
Yeah, yeah, different kind of inspections.
Yeah, same thing. Anyway, I gotta be, I, I, I wish I luck. I hope they come up with something.
I think it'd be great. And it would, and it would set, and it would set a great precedent.
Right, yeah. I mean, we built this communication systems downstairs specifically to have fire services.
I'll be able to talk.
I'll be able to talk to each other, be able to do all that, but you know, it's all fun.
Well, that might help, actually.
It would help.
You know, I mean, that, you know, the, the money that the county spent and some of it was grant money, some of it was our money to, for that three plus million dollar system.
Yeah.
You know, it could very well be of advantage for these three communities, cause they're all set up to talk to each other.
Well, let's see what comes of it. I was thinking about, if they had some meetings, I was gonna go over there and encourage them to do that. Probably be.
I think that there is one in Madbury coming up.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. That there's not my district.
Okay, so which one?
No, he's just kidding.
I'm only kidding. I'm only kidding.
You're not allowed to drive.
Yeah, they'll probably go there and say, well, you don't have anything to do with us, so see you later. Yeah, okay, great. Yeah, you can go, right? Alrighty, are you getting a little of the new business? Not hearing any, I have any questions or comments from the public? I've got any agenda? Ben, Susan, could I see you?
Hi, it's nice to see you too. Can I go off the agenda?
Sure, please go ahead.
Okay, um, well, I have to be careful, cause I get performances for doing that.
Not in this, not in this office.
Okay, um, I know that a couple of meetings ago, we were discussing the air handling stuff and that there was some back and forth, um, do we have to do it? Do we not have to do it? And has there been any updates with regards to that?
We're, 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 we're filing the appropriate paperwork, letting them know that we're done.
Okay, just, that's great.
Because we, we need to proceed.
Yeah, we just need to.
We need to, we need to get going on, on the roof.
Right.
Just, it was just a follow-up to see where you all were at.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, not hearing any more questions or comments to understand the motion for a non-public session of personnel. The contract negotiations and laws movement, I will second it. World Call Thirty, Neil Lemon.
Yeah.
Mr. Levick, yes. This is myself, yes. Okay, the vote unanimous.